Good morning, Commissioners. It's lovely to be greeted by some festivities this morning. So to review the council modifications that are being covered in 6902, they are, it's a council modification to the bulk and then there is an applicant modification to use. So the modification to the bulk is a reduction of height on the east tower to 140 feet. This actually means that it's no longer requiring the waiver facilitated by the general large-scale special permit. And the applicant has made a commitment to 12 stories on that portion of the site. It's the west tower that fronts on Queens Boulevard that's going to be reduced from 17 stories to 15 stories. That's still covered by the special permit with a height of 161 feet 6 inches. And then the applicant is modifying one of the uses in the project, and that is to include a school within the base. And so again, this does not, this actually already fits within the bounds of the special permit and the compliant bulk. It's a school that's 66,649 square feet. The analysis was done for both a charter and a public school, but they have been in conversations with the SCA for this to potentially be a school site. The changes in the overall project does result in a reduction in units. And so that's going to be total 431 units. And so that's 302 market rate units and 129 affordable units. And there is a reduction in the parking spaces as well. And so that's 202 parking spaces, 151 for the market rate units, 19 for the affordable, and 32 for the retail.
Questions from the Commission. Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
And the school, the 66,000 square feet approximately, would be in lieu of, was that going to be retail space? What was that going to be?
It was going to be, some of that is parking and some of that was just residential unit spaces. It's actually on the southeastern portion of the site, so it's the corner of 70th and 47th. So it doesn't actually remove any of the retail space.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Levin.
And if, as I understand the way SCA does these things, they take a look, the space gets saved and SCA makes its own decision as the time gets closer about whether it's actually going to take up the space or not. If the SCA declines to take it up, could it revert to the residential and the parking? Or?
That would still be within scope of the project, so it could certainly do that.
Okay. So the developer will have the flexibility of making use of the space even if, let's hope it doesn't, it's great that there would be a school located there, but if the SCA should decline to take the space, you'd want to see it given to some use?
Certainly. The applicant has also been in conversation with charter school operators here, too. So it's more likely that it would be either a public school or a charter school.
More certain to be a school, the uncertainty is about what kind of school.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? The one thing I want to note is that the Commission routinely sees our planning staff who come before us making presentations, but on a matter like this where we receive a council modification, we have a lot of unsung expert heroes in our technical review division, environmental assessment and review division, who do the analysis and in this instance, very promptly, that allows us to make a scope determination. And so with that, I'll ask for an assent by show of hands to let the council know that the modification is within scope. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe that that ends our review session.
Yes, I just want to note that Commissioner Edie is recused on this item, and that is for the record. And since there are no other matters for the review session, we may close. The time is 10:08. Thanks.
Great. And with that, I will welcome everyone to the City Planning Commission Public Meeting. And Madam Secretary, the floor is yours.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held at NYC City Planning Commission hearing room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Wednesday, October 31, 2018. As a courtesy during the proceedings, we ask that you please turn off all cell phones and beepers. All speakers should fill out a speaker's card. In addition, we ask that those providing testimony, please identify yourself, limit your remarks to three minutes, and speak clearly into the microphone. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli. Commissioner Cirullo.
Here.
Commissioner De La Ous.
Yes.
Commissioner Duette.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Efron.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Here. A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, October 17, 2018.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved.
Scheduling. On calendar numbers one through six, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled in Wednesday, November 14, 2018, for a public hearing to be held at NYC City Planning Commission hearing room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway.
And on the, excuse me, and on the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 13. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number seven, CDs four and five, N180373ZRM, in the matter of an application for a zoning tax amendment concerning the special garment center tax amendment. For a favorable report on calendar number seven. Chair Lago.
Well, before casting my vote in support, I want to thank our colleagues at the New York City Economic Development Corporation, recognizing that while the land use action before us is a portion of it, the significance that we as a commission, the significance that we as residents of the city place on the incentives that they put together to assure, one, that this section of the city can continue to thrive and that we'll see reinvestment in this corner of the city, but also that we do our best to maintain the infrastructure, the vibrant infrastructure that requires certain facets of the garment industry to be located in this proximity. So with that, I vote yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
First, I want to acknowledge the staff on the Manhattan Borough present in the working group that worked through many of the challenges to update zoning, to reflect the needs of the garment industry, and really the entire fashion ecosystem, which has benefited from these zoning protections for a number of years. I know that some folks look at the district and they see that the zoning has failed because there's been such a retrenchment of manufacturing in the area. I guess I think what would have happened to garment manufacturing and that ecosystem had we not had those protections, given the global trends that have existed for so many years. So which brings me to a number of the recommendations that we heard for the city to commit additional subsidy money for a nonprofit to acquire and manage space in the garment center, something that everyone that was part of the working group thought was a critical piece. And certainly a portion of increased bid assessment resulting from the rezoning could go towards that building as a form of value capture. Finally, we have another area of the city where we are creating a mixed-use district and innovation district, and we're not creating any additional enforcement mechanisms to really ensure that it's successful. So while I absolutely support the thrust of what is before us, I'm going to abstain in the hope that the council can further approve upon it.
Is that a yes or no?
That was an abstain.
Oh, abstain, okay. I didn't have any insight. Thank you. Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
I have been concerned that a rezoning of the garment center in Midtown would reward bad behavior by landlords, particularly those who bought the buildings in the area as speculative investments, knowing that the rent manufacturers paid could not support that investment. I was worried it would lead to similar disregard for zoning in IBZs and other pockets of urban manufacturing throughout New York City. I had hoped we could use the technological innovation know-how of New Yorkers, including newly leveraged innovative investments in technology by Technion and Cornell, FIT and Parsons, to lead the country in the great future of small urban manufacturing in Manhattan. However, I do understand that the problem of too little attention to the needs of Manhattan manufacturers, as well as manufacturers throughout the five boroughs, particularly small and medium-sized businesses which employ some of our hardest-working, newest and hardest-to-reemploy New Yorkers when those factories close or move overseas. The lack of enforcement did not begin with this administration. I thank the department and the chair and EDC for taking on this problem with a creative solution of incentives, new development, and rezoning. I hope this rezoning will move forward that dream of technological innovation in small urban manufacturing and urge the council and the city to invest heavily in this future. With that, I vote yes.
Commissioner Knight?
I associate my comments with those of the chair and would like to make a request to have EDC come in at the appropriate time and give us an update on the utilization of the programs that have been created to create more garment manufacturing space. And I vote yes.
Commissioner Levin?
I share many of the observations of Commissioners De La Ous and Efron. Particularly, this has been a long time coming. Work has been underway on reforming the zoning in the garment district for a very long time across multiple administrations. And I'm really gratified that it, we finally got it close enough to right through the work of the task force and the recognition by the administration that some of the issues that were being advanced really needed to be grappled with. So I believe that the rezoning, the zoning actions that are, or the tax amendment that's before us here is entirely appropriate. However, I am concerned that the package of incentives that was insisted upon by the task force and by the community board and by the borough president are, have certainly been identified and been accepted as appropriate, but are still not quite fully baked. So I think it's premature to relax the zoning protections without giving the incentives a little bit more time to work. So for that reason, I abstain, but as Commissioner De La Ous said, I certainly hope that there is room for improvement by the time this reaches the City Council. So that's an abstain.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
This is something new, guys. I'm going to abstain.
Actually, before we move on to the next one, I think Commissioner Knight's suggestion is excellent, and that we'll figure out the appropriate time to come back and get an update, because I think all of us have a vested interest in seeing this work out well for the physical location, but much more importantly, for the workers who are there. And as Commissioner Efron said, workers today and in the future who'll be employed there. And I was remiss in not noting that getting to this point took a village and the community board, the steering committee, but most especially, the speaker and the Manhattan Borough president were absolutely indispensable, both for their intellectual capital and also for just being driving forces in getting to yes in a really, really complex situation.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number seven. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers eight and nine. Calendar number eight, CD8, N19002ZAX. Calendar number nine, N19003ZAX. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 360 West 253rd Street-Hang residents for adoption on calendar numbers eight and nine. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Calendar numbers eight and nine have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 10, CD3, N150209RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning outer bridge commons for adoption on calendar number 10. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Calendar number 10 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 11, CD3, N190022RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 76 Egan Avenue for adoption on calendar number 11. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Calendar number 11 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 12, CD3, N190024RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 145 Waterbury Street, Waterbury Avenue, sorry, for adoption on calendar number 12. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Calendar number 12 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 13, CD3, N19006RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 115 Canton Avenue for adoption on calendar number 13. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Calendar number 13 has been adopted. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 14 and 15. Calendar number 14, CD9, C180347ZMK. Calendar number 15, N180348ZRK. In the matter of applications for a zoning map and zoning tax amendment concerning the Franklin Avenue rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 14 and 15. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 14 and 15. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 16 through 21. Calendar number 16, CD16, C180485HAK. Calendar number 17, C180486PCK. Calendar number 18, N180487ZRK. Calendar number 19, C180488ZSK. Calendar number 20, C180489ZMK. Calendar number 21, C180490ZSK. In the matter of application for site selection and acquisition, disposition of city-owned property, zoning map and zoning tax amendments, and special permits concerning the Marcus Garvey Village, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 16 through 21. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 16 through 21. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 22, CD1, N190020ZAK. In the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 420 Kent Avenue for adoption on calendar number 22. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Calendar number 22 has been adopted. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 23, CD6, N190129Hik. In the matter of communication concerning the landmark designation of the Hans Christian Kindergarten. On the adoption of calendar number 23, for referral to the City Council. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Calendar number 23 has been adopted. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 24, CD6, N190130Hik. In the matter of a communication concerning the landmark designation of 238 President Street, on the adoption of calendar number 24 for referral to the City Council. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Duette?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Efron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Abstain.
Calendar number 24 has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 51. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 25, CD6, C190026HAX. A public hearing in the matter of an application for UDOT designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning 4697 Third Avenue.
We're going to have a 10-minute presentation by the applicant team, which is comprised of Kay Real, Mark Ginsburg, Samantha Magistro. Apologies if I've mispronounced it. We're soon going to have electronic sign-ins, so I don't have to struggle with handwriting and then Kristaleng.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. My name is Kay Real, representing the applicant HPD. I'm here to present you with a proposed new development, thank you, to be located at 4697 Third Avenue between East 180 H Street and Cyrus Place. This development will provide 52 units of affordable housing, plus one superintendent's unit, and a new eight-story building. The project was selected in 2014 as a result of a neighborhood construction program, request for proposals designed to develop small vacant city-owned sites through the creation of 100% affordable housing and promote neighborhood revitalization. In addition to providing the affordable units, the proposed development will also offer ground floor space. So the ULP actions, the designation of the development site as an urban development action area, and the disposition of city-owned property. Also here to speak on the details of the project and answer questions are Samantha Magistro, representing the developer Bronx Pro, Mark Ginsburg, and Kristal Neg, representing the architect Curtis and Ginsburg Architects. Thanks.
And apologies, we're having technical difficulties with this presentation, so you might want to call up the review session materials.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Samantha Magistro. I'm a principal of Bronx Pro. Brief introduction to my firm. We are affordable housing developers who are neighborhood-based in the Bronx. We've developed close to 2,500 units of housing. Our commitments that we make when we do our projects is, one, to build beautiful housing; two, to make sure it's sustainable, both environmentally, but also financially for the long term; and, three, to think about how we can create community opportunities. I think that the project we're presenting here meets all of those criteria. So as Kay mentioned, we're building an eight-story property with 52 units, including a super unit. On the ground floor, we'll have close, just over 10,000 square feet of retail space that we hope to bring in an engaging use for that community. And some of the slides, I was going to go through kind of the neighborhood here, but this is truly the heart of the Bronx, and we were able to take advantage of the rezoning of Third Avenue and East Tremont that I believe occurred in 2010. So I don't know if I, thanks. I think the most important things for me to note at this time, because I know that we're limited in time, is that we are building this property in partnership with HPD. It will be funded through HPD's Ella program. We will be providing affordability at a diverse range of income levels, from folks that live in the community at the lower tiers, and also introducing moderate income. This site is just shy of Fordham Road, which is a big commercial and institutional corridor. There's also, it's served by Metro North, and there's a bus line along Third Avenue. So we think that this is really a transit-oriented development. We think that we're knitting the fabric of the community together by providing housing and retail, and we're really excited to present this project to you guys. I think without the visuals, I will let the architects kind of talk through the specifics of the design. I just want to make sure that you have time.
Thank you. So hopefully the visuals will come up, so you can imagine. But the building covers the entire site. We have a partial one-story space. The ground floor is largely commercial with a residential lobby. Also, bike parking for the residential opens, has direct street access, so you don't have to go through the lobby. One parking space for either the commercial tenant or for management. The commercial space is also partially in the cellar. Then on the second floor, we have a outdoor recreation space with a playground structure. So we're now going through the slides.
I'm going to get to where the slides that are on the architectural, so we can flip back to the affordability, but I think this is where you can talk.
And, well, actually, so on the, whoops. On the ground floor, we have commercial plate facing Third Avenue. As I said, one parking space, the residential lobby, and the bike parking. And then on the second floor, we have an exterior landscape terrace with a play structure and sitting area for the residents adjacent to the laundry room and exercise room. The rest of the floor are residential units. And then, just to talk briefly, we have designed the house to meet, the building to meet Passive House, which is a highly energy-efficient program. We've just completed a Passive House project with Bronx Pro. In addition to the Passive House, we're going to have photovoltaic on the roof, and we're planning to do rainwater harvesting to lower our water consumption. I can go into any details about this if you want, but basically, it's a highly insulated envelope, which is also very tight. We then, for fresh air, have what are called ERVs that exhaust the air from in the building and bring in fresh air that is heated in the winter and cooled in the summer from the exhaust air. And doing all of this greatly lowers our heating and cooling load and we're, but we're then obviously heating and cooling the building. And with that, I, we can go back and just go through the slides quickly so you have a, have an idea, just an idea of what it looks like and the unit distribution, and then the three of us can hopefully answer any questions you have.
Correct. Yeah, I think just maybe just doing the site photos would be helpful for folks. So this is some photos from Fordham neighborhood. As I mentioned, Metro North, you have Fordham Transit Plaza, you have Fordham University, and then, of course, there's light retail. The land, so there's a lot of great amenities in this community. This is a picture of the site that we're developing. It's currently vacant and owned by the Department of Transportation. So you can see that here, there's less, it's not as built up as Fordham, and there's some light commercial or I would say manufacturing uses and light residential. So we're trying to knit those two communities together, a mixed-use, mixed-income project. This is the details again that we put forward. I think one of the things I failed to mention is that we are applying for financing this winter, we hope to be awarded, and start construction in June of 2019. That's the goal if we are financed. This is the affordability in more detail. I also want to note that this part of the rezoning was include, was adding inclusionary housing, and we have 13 units that will be, will meet that requirement here. And you can see we have many tiers of affordability, including a tier, the 15% of AMI is a tier for the formerly homeless. So we're excited to really provide all types of households here and create a diverse community. Those are the main slides. I think this is a land use slide, if you're interested in anything like that, but those are the main.
Maybe a little.
Maybe a little. But I don't think I have to educate you on this. And this is, again, just a picture of the neighborhood. Maybe I'll leave it on our nice design slide with all the specifics on it for questions. And thank you again. I was nervous, so thank you.
Any other comments from the applicant team? Okay, then we'll, we'll turn it to questions from the commissioner. Commissioner Deloos?
First off, it looks like a great project. We don't, I think it's great that you're using ELLA and, you know, good luck with the tax credit application. I know that those are tough. It's great to see such a broad range of incomes, from 50% of AMI to 80% of AMI. You know, is there, I'm wondering if during the process for ULP or in other consultations with the community, you've heard an even greater desire to kind of have more units at lower AMIs, given what the area median income is? And I'm wondering if that's something that is possible. You also have some great amenities in the project, and I know that those cost money, too.
Sure. I think we are trying to balance both being financeable and creating a lot of opportunity for residents who live in that community to access these units. We did present the project and the affordability tiers to Community Board Six. It was well-received. There was not any comments requesting lower affordability. And, you know, so it didn't come up in that context.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Ephron?
Really just a comment. Thank you for being responsive to my observation about the orange having some relationship to construction netting and also doing what you say, which is creating beautiful projects. So I really do appreciate the responsiveness. Normally, I don't think it's the role of the commission to comment on it. It was really just a concern about something very positive going on in a neighborhood that could be perceived even by some looking at it from far away as negative. So thank you.
Commissioner Levin?
Yeah, I have a question about the Passive House features of the project. It's wonderful to see that format being used in such an affordable building. I wonder if you could tell us just a little bit more about the, I mean, obviously you've figured out that it ought to be financially feasible, but where are the pushes and pulls in using Passive House design in this kind of an affordable building?
Sure. I'll speak to it from the underwriting perspective and then I'll let, you know, the architectural team talk about it as well. So what we're able to do here, the cost typically does increase in construction to meet this new level of efficiency, so that does get taken into account. But what we're able to do here is get our lenders comfortable to underwrite to very, to lower expenses for our utilities, and that helps offset that additional cost. So I think that it's very feasible. In general, Bronx Pro has been, you know, known, we're property managers first, and so we've made sure that all of our buildings operate very well. So I feel comfortable having an expense underwritten for that.
And you'll be around for the long term to be able to realize the efficiencies.
Yeah, so, I mean, we are a family-owned business. We own our properties. We stay in the Bronx for a long time and we're not going anywhere.
I'd just add, having now done a Passive House building with Bronx Pro, who also builds it, we've worked with them to minimize and make the, minimize the extra costs and make it efficient. The other thing I'd point out, within about a year, New York is likely to adopt the stretch code, which is about 80% of Passive House. So we're going to be doing this on every building soon.
Good to know.
It's actually nice to see affordable housing leading the way. Yes, Commissioner Deloos?
I appreciate the answer about, you know, getting lenders comfortable about the reduction in utility costs. I'm just wondering too, what, how, the acquisition price or the lack thereof also contributed to that ability to adopt Passive?
Yes. When we were purchasing, the price for, for dollars essentially, yes, that is a big factor in terms of making the deal financeable. Yes, that's always in the mix.
Reminding us of the value of the ever scarcer city-owned land. Other questions from the commission? Well, thank you to the applicant team. Those are the only people who have signed up to speak on this matter, but if there's anyone else present who would be interested, now would be the time. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 26 and 27. Calendar number 26, CD6C190064HDM. Calendar number 27, C190065HUM. Public hearing in the matter of applications for the disposition of city-owned property and the First Amendment to the Waterside Plaza URP.
Our first speaker in support is the council member for the area, Keith Power. And I want to note, for the benefit of the audience, that we always accord our elected officials the right to speak for as long as they want. They are not bound by the three-minute rule.
I appreciate that. I would have made it longer if I knew that that was the rule, but I, I appreciate efficiency in this life, so I'll keep it as short as I can. Thank you. Happy Halloween. I like the costumes that I say. And good morning. My name is City Councilmember Keith Powers. I'm the City Councilmember representing Waterside Plaza, which is the application coming before you today. I want to also just welcome and thank many of the neighbors and residents of Waterside Plaza for joining us here today. And nice to see all of the members of the City Planning Commission. As noted, I'm testifying here today in support of the two applications submitted by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development related to Waterside Plaza, which are before you today. The applications represent a robust and innovative affordable housing plan for tenants that I urge you to approve. Just on background about Waterside Plaza, it's a neighborhood actually adjacent to where I grew up and live today. We are here, and this application discusses the future of Waterside Plaza for many of the people who are here today and many of the people they are representing. Waterside Plaza is located between 29th Street and 25th Street and 29th Streets alongside the East River. If you drive on the FDR, you'll see it on your right-hand side, or usually right-hand side. It's a housing complex that was created as part of the Mitchell Lama Program in the 1970s to provide stable housing for thousands of middle-class residents. Waterside Plaza, for many that live there, have served as an oasis for the families and the residents. It's a community that's home to two schools, the United Nations International School and the British International School. It resides within walking distance to the United Nations, Bellevue Hospital, NYU Langone Hospital, and Hunter College Brookdale Campus, amongst many other things around the 20s and the 30s. And it's home to hundreds of families that have looked at it as their past, current, and future home. Over recent years, that has become more difficult as the program exited the Mitchell Lama Program and became increasingly expensive, thereby jeopardizing the future of the long-term residents. At the conclusion of Waterside Plaza's involvement in the Mitchell Lama Program, many of those tenants saw their rents jump with annual increases of over 7% year after year. The remaining tenants that have, that still remain there today and were there at the time eventually entered into a settlement with the owner and are now known as a settling tenants. As the prices have increased, the population has become rightfully concerned about their ability to absorb these increases, as many are approaching or at retirement already. The deal that we have come to today, just to, just to know why we're here at City Planning, is a lease that is with the City of New York for the property that is accompanied by a housing deal to preserve affordability. These conditions that I mentioned created the need to create a new affordable housing deal for Waterside Plaza. The proposed deal accomplishes four goals: provides substantial relief for rent burdened tenants, permanently freezes the rent in dozens of apartments, limits rent increases for middle-income residents, and preserves affordable housing, and lastly, preserves affordable housing on a generational scale through the year 2098. The guaranteed 75 years of rent protections for hundreds of apartments, combined with the immediate relief to tenants whose rents have been steadily increasing, demonstrates to me a groundbreaking model for affordable housing in New York City. Very importantly, the deal provides a benefit to every single settling tenant, regardless of, but proportional to both income and rent burden. Freezing the rent of any tenant who makes below the definition of, the HPD definition of middle income, will ensure that seniors can remain in their homes and have one less thing to worry about as they retire. Many of the residents of Waterside Plaza, especially those living on a fixed income, are severely rent burdened, with some paying very high percentages of their income towards their rent. Those tenants in the middle-income category who are rent burdened by over 30% will be able to have their rents reduced to 30% as part of this deal and permanently frozen there. To me, that represents a great deal. We have a couple of recommendations that we are making to the city, both here and as we move forward into the deal. This application is a result of many months of negotiation and conversation between the city, HPD, Waterside Plaza Management, the Waterside Plaza Tenants Association, who are represented right behind me, and the elected officials, including myself. As a result of this stakeholder engagement, the deal was approved by the Waterside Tenants Association with, I believe the final result was 199 to 0. Very, very, I wish I got that as my vote. Maybe a little higher turnout. But even with broad support of this deal amongst tenants, the Tenants Association elections, elected officials fought for a deal that would be most inclusive. In our conversation with the tenants and with the management, there are a few outstanding points that we still believe merit consideration as we get to the final parts of the deal. I've heard from tenants often who are still working but concerned that even with the permanent rent freeze provided at the conclusion of this deal, they'll still have trouble affording it once they do retire. So those who are not yet retired still are concerned that they'll be burdened once they retire. During months of negotiations, this was really the central point of the conversation is how do people who are not retired yet, how will they be able to take advantage of this deal in the most inclusive way? We still look forward to a continued conversation with HPD and the administration on this point to see if we can ensure that more people can qualify for it. In response to those concerns, we did negotiate an extended window for tenants to be eligible for the rent reset. So anybody retiring next year will be able to take advantage of it. So if you are, for instance, a public employee, who knows when your pension kicks in and you're ready to retire, you wouldn't miss an opportunity just by virtue of the calendar year. We're thankful to HPD for that consideration because we think it's a new consideration given, but of course, still supportive of a deal that is more inclusive to those facing retirement in the coming years. In addition to this concern, I've also heard questions from tenants about the definition of income, which is so important when we talk about how to qualify. It's really based on income. The, while already providing a groundbreaking model for future affordable housing programs, the logistical execution of this plan, we think we'll be able to go even beyond that. The tenants have suggested two potentially beneficial modifications to definition, including excluding required minimum distributions of individual retirement accounts, IRAs, allowing the deduction of medical expenses, and also which definition of income you use, regular income, adjusted gross income. In those instances, tenants, I think, are rightfully raising questions about the amount of income that will be available for rent rather than just sort of what is reflected on your, on your, at your tax returns. Even with those questions and comments, I want to repeat, I think that this deal is a deal we're supporting. I hope the City Planning Commission will support it today, and we look forward to raising those questions as we move forward. I want to thank the management of Waterside Plaza, Richard Ravitch. I want to thank Janet Handel and the Waterside Tenants Association, HPD, and my colleagues in government for being, for working to make this possible and being good stewards of this community and ensuring it has a future, has a, it has a future for those who have called it home for a very long time. The Waterside Plan, to me, is a landmark achievement for the attired community. And even as we settle these final questions, I think it's something that we all should be very proud of. I think it will provide immediate relief to scores of tenants who are terrified of having to vacate their homes, and it also will guarantee affordability for decades, even for those who won't be there to enjoy it today. Each apartment exited will add another unit to the affordable housing stock in New York City for 75 years, which I think is a wonderful deal. I said I'd be brief. I have more, but I will stop there. I urge you to support it, and of course, we still ask both the City Planning, HPD, and the administration to consider the other questions that we have outstanding here to make sure that this deal is most inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Questions for the Councilmember?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Deloos?
First, thanks for being here, sorry.
Thank you. That's okay.
So just, just as a sense, how long did it take to, to get to this deal?
It took us, I started in January and it was sort of, the conversations were beginning, I think, around that time because the, it's really related to a lease that Waterside Plaza has with the City of New York. So as they're looking at their future and planning for it, there was a conversation about the lease, and then the affordability became part of it. I think since basically January 1st, when that ball dropped and I took office, we've been negotiating it. And to get to the point around where we could come to some, I think, reasonable agreement on what would be more inclusive, I think there are still outstanding questions, but I mean, from January until, this will potentially pass and hopefully pass in, in January of 19, it'll be about a year of negotiating and working on it since I took office. And I know my predecessor, Dan Goranek, had kick-started conversations. I should also thank him for kick-starting conversations as well. But the central part of this conversation was really about how to handle retirement, not just for the people who are already retired, but how to handle those who are facing retirement at a time where we're trying to ease the retirement burden on many folks who live there.
Other questions? Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Commissioner? I wanted to note my presence and also vote on the affirmative and on all of our parts today.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Okay, our next speaker in support is Kevin Paris from HPD, and he is joined by Jeremy Hoffman for questions.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair, and morning to all the members of the audience. Councilmember, I thank you for your testimony before. I did have a presentation prepared with a lot of the notes that you shared, so I think I'll be a little bit brief in my comments today.
And because you only get three minutes.
And because I only get three minutes. That is correct. So on the screen, you'll see this is a project overview. A lot of this has already been mentioned. What brings us here together this morning is a ULP application to extend the ground lease, and this is going to be done through a modification or an amendment of the Urban Renewal Plan for Waterside Plaza. Currently, there, we are looking to add an additional 47 years to the expiration of the Urban Renewal Plan, and that will carry it through to 2116. So we can have a total unexpired term of 99 years under the Waterside lease. Under this lease extension, the plan, the actual lease will be amended to allow for the settling tenants that were referred to earlier to receive a suite of benefits that I will briefly also just go through. So under the current ground lease, these are, these are some of the conditions that are, that exist under the ground lease. And then, under the proposed amended ground lease, these are some of the terms and some of the conditions that will be present should this move forward. So under the amended lease, the settling tenants will be eligible for a permanent rent freeze should their incomes fall at or below 165% of AMI. We include this chart up on the screen so you can just see how that relates to household size. For those tenants who are above 165% of AMI, there will be a rent stabilization increase from 2.25% to a maximum 4.25%. And if at any point should their income fall below 165% of AMI, they can then apply for a rent freeze. As mentioned, those tenants that are rent burdened, they will receive a one-time rent reduction to 30% of household income, which would coincide with moving into an appropriately sized unit. And settling tenants who will retire in the same year of the lease amendment, they will also receive this rent reduction. So just some of the additional benefits under this new affordability structure. Under the amended lease, tenants will be able to move into a unit that best reflects their housing needs. So that's where we have the apartment move up and move down. Tenants will also be able to age in place. Units will be improved where, where it's applicable, where it's practical, that will allow tenants to age in place within their units. Over the longer term, should a unit that's occupied by a settling tenant now become vacant, that unit will be rent and income restricted to an average of 120% of AMI. And the affordable, the affordability restrictions in place will be in place for a term of 75 years, and at which time, after that point in time, it will phase up over the next five years to market. As also stated before, this application received approvals from both the Community Board and from the Borough President, and I'm available to take any questions.
Well done. Okay, questions? Commissioner Deloos?
Kevin, thanks so much for being here and for doing that quickly. You got through a lot in a very little bit of time. You know, first, I just want to note a couple of things. One is the importance and the power of urban renewal plans, I think, came up in your, your testimony.
Yes.
The power that the city has through ground leases came up in your testimony. And then I wanted to ask, has this, has HPD been involved in negotiating something similar for another, similar group of tenants? I guess, these are incredible protections that are here. They're kind of unprecedented, especially for residents that are, that are middle income. So I'm just wondering, can you, can you just comment on that? Is it, how unique is it?
It is unique. I mean, I've been with the agency for about five or six years. This is the first application of its type that I'm a part of and with, within this borough. So I apologize, I actually didn't introduce myself. I'm Kevin Paris, Deputy Director of the Manhattan Planning Team at HPD. So this is the first of its kind that I've seen. And I really can't speak to other urban renewal plans across the city, but that's something I could find out if we do have those types of talks happening now.
I wanted to bring up a point, just because you may be the only person representing the City of New York who's coming before us on this.
Uh-oh.
And also to acknowledge, congratulations, and I think it's very exciting, borne out by the vote, which I think is evidenced best. This, I don't know if there is a NORC, Naturally Occurring Retirement Community, within Waterside, but this seems like a wonderful opportunity for the city to really address a population that they have worked so hard to keep in place in post-retirement with all of the positive health benefits and other outcomes that come from having a NORC. So I just put it out there, it's a multi-department opportunity, and since you're the only representative of the City of New York, I just hope you'll carry that forward.
Definitely, I will.
Which is really an unusual opportunity.
Thank you for letting me know about that.
Yes, Commissioner Levin?
Yes, I'm just curious to know how the, these commitments get administered, monitored, overseen over the 99 years, or I guess the 75 years of the affordability commitments? As people come and go, units change, tenants, who makes that selection? How do we know that the, what's the city putting in place to monitor compliance with the commitments that were made here?
In the interest of providing you with the correct information, I can get back to the commission about exactly how that's monitored and tracked throughout the agency and throughout the term of the 99 years. So I'll definitely get back to everybody.
Okay, that's not exactly within our purview on this application, but still very interesting, useful to know.
I'll also note that a number of folks in the Tenants Association will be testifying, and I think that we can, might get some insights from them, as well as to how they themselves monitor it as well. Yes, Commissioner Cirillo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a thought, and I'm not sure this happens often or is expected to occur, but since one of the goals is obviously to provide certainty and stability for the tenants, and a great deal of that is related to the program and household income levels, what happens if this is a possibility where there are tenants with fluctuating household incomes based on a variety of things?
Right.
I'm not sure if that happens often, but what happens in the situation? It's very clear if someone is in one category and then permanently shifts to another category.
Right.
But what happens annually if there are fluctuations in income that perhaps change the category, but it's not necessarily permanent?
Right.
Is there a window that's studied, or is it actually done each year? So is it over a period of time? I just don't know how that works, but I could imagine it could be quite, you know, there's a lot of things about that that could be wrong to do, but I just don't know how that would be handled if it's something that's envisioned.
If the commission would allow, my colleague from HPD who works in finance may be best suited to answer that question.
Of course.
If I could just check, are there other questions?
Sure.
For Mr. Paris? Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
I think I know the answer to this, but I'll just ask it anyway. In the event that the property is sold to new ownership, all of these covenants in this agreement would run with the land, would it not?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Paris? Okay, then, Mr. Hoffman, you're up to answer Commissioner Cirillo's question.
Thank you. My name is Jeremy Hoffman. I'm the Executive Director for Multifamily Preservation, HPD, and thank you to Councilmember Powers for all his partnership on this, as well as Janet and the rest of the TA. To respond to the question around fluctuating income, so the way we've structured this is a little bit different than a lot of other affordable housing that we do. Typically, someone moves into an apartment at a certain income level, and their rent will stay based on what that income level is, but that person's income could go up or it could go down, and typically, there's no relief or anything like that. You know, it's their responsibility for the rent at the level they moved in. In this plan, one of the things that we worked out is that in the future, if there is someone that's working at a higher income, and their income dips below 165% of AMI, they will be eligible to apply for a rent freeze at that moment. For the folks that are lower and getting the one-time reset and a rent freeze now, that is going to be their frozen rent, and their income could go up. Maybe they inherit money, it could go down if they have an incident in their life, and that's kind of a reality of all affordable housing.
And that makes sense. I just didn't know if that's how it was working here, because I can't imagine the, you know, sort of the uncertainty in having to, you know, having to ride that, the positive years and the negative years through as a tenant. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I will also just say that we really tried to make this be as, it is such a unique project and such a unique opportunity for us, with willing partners in the owner and the local elected officials, and we tried to do as unique and as forward-looking of a plan as we could, while also trying to make it, maintain consistency across the other work that we do as an agency in affordable housing in New York City.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Our next speaker in support with modifications is Chris Spangler.
Greetings, City Planning Commission, Commissioner Marissa Lago, Kenneth Knuckles, Vice Chairman, and all other members of the commission. My name is Chris. In advance, my thanks to all of you for both listening and actually hearing our urgent plea from all of us who have been so passionately and tirelessly working on this. The list includes Waterside Plaza settling tenants, those retired or about to retire, and those of us who will be retiring two to nine years out. Janet Handel, a fearless and tireless leader of our Tenants Association, Waterside Tenants Association members, Peter Davis, our Managing Director of Waterside Plaza, former Lieutenant Governor of New York Dick Ravitch, Councilmember Keith Powers, and Assemblyman Harvey Epstein, our Community Board Sixth Chair Molly Hollister, and the rest of the board, and Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer. All aforementioned are passionately in full support of what I am asking. This entire collective team is requesting your modifying the deal to include extending the retirement rent reset to those whose retirement horizon is beyond 2019. In other words, two to nine years out. We urgently ask that you please approve this part as well. We will not be able to live our lives out as residents at Waterside Plaza unless we are extended a rent reset upon our retirement, when our incomes will be drastically less than our current working incomes. Please make this work inclusively for all of us settling tenants. This is critical to our lives. We are probably meeting today in what is known as, quote, "the equitable life," unquote, building, and that is what we are so passionately and fairly asking for, the opportunity to have a, quote, "equitable life," unquote, for all settling tenants, those retiring now, as well as those of us retiring further out in the future. These are our lives and the last part of our lives. Please help us all sleep at night now, not just some. Please let us all age in place, and that place being amazing Waterside Plaza, the place I have fortunately and been proudly been able to call and finally call my home for the most recent over 25 years of my life, and the place I would love to wholeheartedly call my home for the rest of it. With great appreciation and gratitude, we strongly ask you to please grant the grandfather and now still working settling tenants whose time horizon is two to nine years out to the rent, retirement rent reset. City Planning Commissioner Members Chair Lago, Vice Chairman Knuckles, and all other members of the commission. As we all know, life is very precious. Knowing now that we won't be losing our homes at Waterside Plaza, especially in the latter years of our lives, is also very precious and will give us peace of mind going forward. A large part of one's life is one's home. Please grant the, in a rent retirement to us, working tenants who can't afford to retire until two to nine years to fruition, and we in desperation ask that you please modify this now. Please help us keep our homes and our community. This modification is vital to us. I thank you from my heart.
If you wouldn't mind staying to answer questions?
I'm sorry.
And I'll note that you referred to the tireless leader, Janet Handel, who will be our next speaker, and I can attest to that. Last week, we were at an evening social event, and Ms. Handel came up, introduced herself to me, and very passionately raised the issue.
I'll miss an opportunity.
So questions for Ms. Spangler?
She's amazing and brilliant.
Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
Hi, I just want to say, thanks for coming. And I appreciate, you know, the request. One thing I think, you know, I really appreciate the request that you're asking. I don't think it's actually within our purview to comment on that particular piece of it, but I think this is absolutely the appropriate form to raise it, so that, you know, the powers that be can follow up on that piece of it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Deloos.
Other questions? Well, thank you, Ms. Spangler.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Our next speaker in support with modifications is Janet Handel.
Okay, where, how do I answer it?
Your presentation, it's not showing up PDF.
Okay, wait, all right, so point this where?
No, no, you can advance this.
Does this work?
No, that's not the, what you need to use. Just press this.
Yeah, but it's...
Okay, or you can use this.
Yeah, that's fine, thanks. Okay. Okay, good morning.
You guys speak into the microphone.
Please speak into the microphone because we livestream.
It's just that I don't like to stand behind a podium where nobody can see me. It's like, nobody has a podium that goes up and down, although this one might. I don't know. At any rate, when Mayor de Blasio made this statement in 2017, "If you're a senior trying to remain in the neighborhood, you helped to build. We are fighting to help you stay." That really spoke to the issue that we were seeing increasingly at Waterside Plaza, me as head of the Tenants Association, and Peter Davis, the General Manager, people who are retired, their income drops dramatically, the rent is still going up, and they just couldn't afford to stay there. We had, you know, Waterside started out with 1,470 settling apartments. We're down to 317, so the income has been, you know, the rent's been really pushing people out. We were very pleased with the deal that HPD and Waterside worked out. It's really an innovative, groundbreaking program to age in place, and we're obviously grateful to everybody who was involved, you know, the mayor, HPD, Richard Ravitch, who really cares about the community. I think he thinks of it sort of like his own kibbutz, and in a way, we are. The General Manager, Peter Davis, our elected officials, Keith Powers, has been, well, I want to say, like indefatigable, that's, can't get that word out. And Harvey Epstein and Brad Hoyleman, and of course, Gail Brewer, have all been working with us to try and move this deal along. And I want to give a special shout out to the staff, because the big people set the policy, but the people that do the work are the staff, and they need to be appreciated. We did vote for the deal 199 to 0. Every settling tenant gets some benefits out of the deal, so we say thank you for that. Just to tell you a little bit about the settling tenants, we like to call ourselves settling because we settled the neighborhood, not because we settled the lawsuit, because there was nobody there at the time. We're 317 apartments, about 745 people, about 2/3 are retired, and I just want to make a point, you know, you talked about this being significant protections for middle-class people. Most of our people who are retired are no longer middle-class. In fact, they are low-income, they are severely rent burdened, so I think it's really important to understand that. But there's a 30% that are still working in their 50s, 60s, and 70s. We are all original Mitchell Lama tenants. We moved there with the expectation of affordability and rent control. Many of us have been there since the 70s and 80s and raised children there. We've been a tax-paying, middle-class community, but in retirement, we become a low-income community, and it's, the city is facing this problem all around. So this deal provides housing security to those who are acquired and enabling us to age in place. This is what things, or the tenants are saying, you know, as this deal was coming through. "It's my home, all my friends are here, I feel relieved, I feel safe, I can sleep at night now." I can't tell you how many people told me that. And one person said, "This is my dream come true. I never thought it would be possible."
Thank you, Ms. Handel. At this point, we'll turn it over to questions from the commission.
Okay, great.
Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
First, I really do appreciate the correction about, you know, as folks age, you know, going from being middle-class to lower income, and the demographic information is very, very helpful, because as you said, it's a challenge that is faced across the city and in many different naturally occurring retirement communities. So can you kind of maybe speak to the last point that you all are trying to negotiate, like where you left off in the conversation with HPD?
So I just wanted to show you these slides in response to your questions, these two slides. People that are still working, you know, their income, and we've surveyed the tenants, it's going to drop to, 66% are going to become 80% of AMI. That's how the numbers break out. You know, another 17% are going to be under 100% of AMI, so that's where they fall out. Those people who are, whose income goes down significantly are going to be severely rent burdened, they're going to have to move from Waterside. So for us, I mean, the fix is really simple, to just grandfather in this retirement reset for an additional two to eight years. You know, I think holistically for the city, it makes much more sense to keep these people in their apartments, rather than turning them out 10 years out. They're going to be, you know, eligible for affordable housing, there's not enough affordable housing, so it seems like it's better to keep them in place.
Other questions for Ms. Handel? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
I'm curious to know about the, why the request is for folks who'll be retiring in two to eight years?
Because everybody, that's the age group that we are. You had to have been there at 2000.
So that includes all, that includes all the remaining settling tenants?
Right.
Okay, this is not so much...
We don't have people in their 30s and 40s who are settling tenants.
Okay, thank you.
And would you comment on the status of your discussions about this?
Well, thus far, we have not been successful in getting this last piece. We did, initially, it was a one-time rent reset at the time of the execution of the platform lease, which is expected, if everything passes, to go happen in February. With additional discussion, HPD agreed to extend that to 2019, but there are many people that I've heard from, and you'll hear from some of them today, that they just don't have the financial flexibility to retire in 2019. They can't get social security, you know, they have other obligations.
And do you have an idea of how many tenants these are, what the size of this cohort is?
97 apartments, and 90, you know, and then again, once, over 165 AMI, upon retirement, seven of those apartments are still going to be over 165 AMI. Everybody else drops below 165 AMI. Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Efron.
I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Levin's question about how this will be enforced. Have you been told how this will be maintained going forward? Is there a mechanism that's been...
My understanding of how it works, and this is how it works at a variety of complexes, is that the landlord hires a certification agent, and that certification agent, that's their, they're paid to basically go through and do the paperwork, and certify people's income, and, you know, as an apartment turns over, then, you know, the next people come in and they handle that.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Handel.
Thank you.
Our next speaker in support with modifications is Diane Park.
Okay.
And she'll be followed by Jay Mallor.
Good morning. A key component of the Mitchell Lama program was to ensure that middle-income families like mine could live in New York City. When Waterside exited the program and our rents went up 9% a year, then 7 1/2% a year, then 4 1/4% a year, we watched many of our friends and neighbors leave Waterside because they could no longer afford to live here. Now, many of the apartments at Waterside are filled with groups of students cohabitating or United Nations families whose rents are subsidized by the UN. My husband and I raised our daughter at Waterside Plaza. By the time we retire, we will have lived at Waterside for 34 years. We want to be able to age in place in our home. I will be 61 years old in February. My husband and I cannot retire in 2018 or 2019, but without a rent reset when we do retire, we won't be able to age in place in our beloved home. It's true that this deal offers some benefits to everyone, but it does not allow all of us, specifically those who are still working, to age in place. It's really a matter of equity. Why is it that the deal would not include the people that have been an intricate part of this community for years, when we are just a few years off from retirement? Our incomes will drop dramatically when we retire, and we won't be able to afford the rents here that are unaffordable. Even a rent freeze would be unaffordable, because our rent has tripled since Waterside left the Mitchell Lama program. My husband and I know we will be eligible for affordable housing when we retire. Why would we have to move to another affordable housing complex, when an arrangement can be made with this deal to ensure that we can age in place in our home? When HBT, when HPD talks about turning over the apartments in their presentation, they're talking about people like us who can no longer afford to live here. We urge the Planning Commission to please ensure that we can all age in place, specifically these tenants at Waterside, who are former Mitchell Lama tenants, who are still working. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Park. Questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Jay... Our next speaker is Jay Mallor, who will be followed by Lizette Chaparro.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. I guess I'm among the 97 non-retired settling tenants. And it's astounding that HPD would come forth with this very excellent policy, the public policy going forward of trying to preserve, trying to do something innovative to maintain, or even salvage affordable housing from what was a mess after Waterside removed itself from Mitchell Lama, which it was entitled to do. But I'm wondering why HPD would at the same time say, "We agreed to the reset one time." It's such a hardship. Others will speak, can, I endorse the hardship stories you'll be hearing and have heard. But why would a public policy-oriented city agency as HPD, coming forth with all this innovation with this program here, and conceivably looking forward to doing it in other areas of the city, why at the same time would it say "one time"? And Janet had to fight, I believe, to get the December 31st, 2019 date, that HPD originally wanted an earlier date. Could it be that HPD doesn't want to be overburdened with administrative issues going forward to have tenants on a constant basis filing the forms on the front end? We are a fixed group. We're finite. We're easily identifiable. Let us fill out the paperwork now. Let us go through the administrative burdens now. And as time comes that we choose to retire, within that window that Janet is advocating for, we can go through the final steps. HPD can hold our certifications in escrow. We can live our lives out without having to have an artificial time that we must retire or lose out on this very excellent opportunity. I don't think HPD has the right to really stand up and say, "This is, this rent, this rent reset, or this rent rollback on the retirement issue is a great innovation," if in fact, it's a limiting innovation. They've done such a great job, why limit it on this particular issue? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mallor. Questions? Okay, our next speaker is Lizette Chaparro, followed by Michael Arnnan.
Good morning, Chair Lago and commissioners of the New York City Planning Commission. My name is Lizette Chaparro, and I'm here on behalf of President Manhattan Borough, President Gail Brewer, to read a statement in support of the Waterside Plaza applications. Waterside Plaza has provided homes for middle- and moderate-income households for over 40 years. The site was developed under the Mitchell Lama Housing Program with the mission of providing affordable housing to middle-income residents. Statewide, approximately 105,000 residential units in 269 developments were built. Unfortunately, Mitchell Lama developments across the city faced challenges throughout the late 1980s and 1990s as landlords sought to exit the program. Waterside Plaza, in fact, exited the Mitchell Lama program. However, thanks to a 2001 agreement between the landlord and the tenants, 325 units were able to receive rent protections. The actions before you today propose to continue those protections for those 325 households. The terms of the proposed ground lease renewal will ensure that tenants in those units who are earning 165% of AMI or less are not rent burdened. It also ensures that those earning more than 165% AMI do not see drastic rent increases, such as those that occurred subsequent to the 2001 settlement. Additionally, the landlord has committed to provide fixture improvements inside of apartments to allow residents to age in place. I thank HPD, the Waterside tenants, Councilmember Powers, and the landlord, who have worked hard over the last several months to ensure that these 325 units will be kept affordable. However, as things stand today, I am still concerned about one thing. Only tenants who retire in 2019, the year that the ground lease will be renewed, will be able to reset their rents based on their new retirement income. These 325 units have survived some turbulent years for affordable housing in New York. We are now in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. One household displaced is one household too many. I exhort HPD, the tenants, and the landlord to continue working closely to ensure that those who retire after 2019 are not displaced from Waterside Plaza. HPD needs to be proactive in assisting tenants who become eligible for subsidies or vouchers after retirement. And for those who would not be eligible, other solutions need to be worked out. Many of these tenants have had their homes in Waterside Plaza for decades and have established a strong community, as anyone who has been to a tenants' association meeting their knows. Furthermore, displacing senior citizens from this site will only mean that the city's affordable housing resources for seniors, which are already strained, will become even more burdened. The city must do everything in its power to ensure that these tenants can age in place. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Arnnan, followed by Irene Narisi.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Michael Arnnan. Happy Halloween, everyone. Today is actually my anniversary, not of my marriage, but of our move to Waterside Plaza that actually took place on October 31st, 1991. And in my precisely 27 years there, I've gotten married, and I've raised my two sons. Now, I expect to be very brief before you, because I just want to discuss a few plans, few details of this plan. I do strongly support this proposal, but only with a few certain modifications. In this proposal as it currently exists, a rent reset will be available to settling tenants only through the end of 2019. So this plan, without any modification, will clearly put my working life past the end of 2019, and my ability to remain at Waterside Plaza at odds with each other. Rents, as has been stated, have risen greatly since the exit from Mitchell Lama. My current rent is in excess of $4,900 per month plus utilities. So under this plan, without any modification, my rent will actually continue to rise, at the very least until my wife and I do take our retirement. So it is a very great burden for us to afford this level of rent while my wife and I are still working, and this will become only greater over time. It will clearly be well in excess of what we will be able to afford after my wife and I have retired. This plan is clearly intended to enable all Waterside Plaza settling tenants to age in place. I am a settling tenant, and I do really want to age in place at Waterside Plaza, so I'm just requesting that a rent reset be made available for all settling tenants for an additional 2 to 8 years, instead of being available only for tenants who retire within one year. With this plan, without any of these requested modifications, it will clearly be impossible for my wife and for myself to remain in our homes. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
To Mr. Arnnan. Questions?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Efron.
Can you just share details, as you understand it, about the flexibility to move into other size apartments within the building, and how that might interface with the request that isn't really a land just request about the reset?
I don't know that I can give you the details. As I understand it, much of that has to do with the size of the family or the occupants of an apartment moving up or moving down. As it stands now, we have my wife, myself, and my two sons residing in a two-bedroom apartment. So it would not be possible for us to move into an apartment with one bedroom at this time. And even doing so, there's been no real discussion in terms of how the actual costs would fluctuate. So I really don't have the answer to that.
I wasn't crying about your personal situation.
No, 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 not at all. No worries. It's just that I don't know how that would affect things.
Thank you.
No, I'm afraid not.
I was going to tell you how it works.
We would always welcome follow-up written submissions that the commissioners will look at.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Arnnan? Yes, Commissioner Mardine.
I just have one basic question I should have asked earlier. When, I hear this term "settling tenants."
Yes.
How far back?
We're talking about when it came out of Mitchell Lama, so...
2005.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Irene Narisi.
Good morning and happy Halloween. I've lived at Waterside for 38 years now, and I would just ask, with the great benefits that we're getting as seniors wanting to stay in Waterside, that the building upgrades the apartments we are in. The other apartments in the building have been upgraded through the years, but we are living with the kitchens and the floors that were the original floors of the building. So there's peeling of the wood in the kitchens that cannot be repaired by maintenance. So I would just ask that that be part of the suite of benefits that are given to those of us who have lived and invested in Waterside for all these years.
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Narisi.
Thank you very much.
And that is the last speaker who has signed up. But if there's anyone else present who would want to speak, now would be the time to come to the podium. Yes, sir, if you would come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning. How are you? I didn't intend to speak today.
If you could identify yourself, sir, for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Richard Cunningham. I'll just give you a quick overview. I moved to Waterside in the 70s. I've been in the same apartment ever since. Shortly after I got there, I got married, we had children, I raised my daughters there. I've had a good life, I've had reasonable income. My wife and I both still work, and will have to continue to work to live in this great It never really dawned on me that I would, there would come a point in my life when I would be faced with the decision that I would have to move from the only place that I had known as home. And the reason would be because I couldn't afford the rent. So that gets me on a bunch of different levels. I would love not to have to have a reset. I know you've heard that word many times from the other speakers that spoke. But the reason I continue to work at 73, and the reason my wife still continues to work, is that it's required. We have financial obligations that require that. And that's going to continue, certainly, for another six or seven years. And I hope it ends at that point, and we can retire. But at the point that we're going to retire, when that time comes, we're going to go from a level of being able to live, and I hate to even use the term a normal life, because we're not extravagant at all, but it's going to drop dramatically. We've taken money that we've used in our life to educate our children in colleges, to send them to graduate school. So it's, there's not assets, there's not great retirement accounts, because we made choices early on to invest in our children. So all I can do is echo the comments of everybody that's come up here already, and tell you that there is a human face to all of these requests, and that arbitrarily saying that you need to retire by a certain age to get the benefit of a reset is a disincentive to be part of the community and to work. So I just ask you to allow those of us that can continue to work and want to work to do so until we're forced to, but then give us the opportunity to reset if we qualify at that time.
Thank you.
And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham, and thank you for coming forward. Questions? Yes, commissioners?
Just more of an immediate comment. I just want to say I can't imagine what Mr. Cunningham's remarks would have been had he been prepared to speak. So, thank you very much.
Powerfully eloquent. Anyone else? Although that'll be a hard act to top. Okay, then the public hearing on this matter is closed.
Barrow of Queens, Council Number 28, CD 10, C 170492, ZMQ. A public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning map amendment concerning 100-03 North Conduit Avenue rezoning.
Our first speaker will be Eric Palatnik.
That's okay. Do you want me to start talking, while? Hello. Good morning. While he's setting up the technology, I'll start my presentation. Good morning, I'm glad to see you wearing costume. Happy Halloween. Eric Palatnik, I would have worn my shark costume, my inflatable one and a half, this afternoon, to take out my five-year-old. It's appropriate, but I didn't know everybody had such a good sense of humor around here. I definitely would have worn it. And the Mouse Ears are getting, not getting as much commentary, I apologize, but they look good, too.
Sequoia costume.
Sequoia costume, I like that one. So we're here today for nothing of such great social importance as you've been contending with this morning on the other applications, but nonetheless, a project that is actually very well-supported by Community Board 10 Councilman Eric Ulrich in the Ozone Park section of Queens. And it is property to 100-03 North Conduit Avenue. I see it's coming up. I see it on the side, it's right here. And I'll just click through, is this working? There we go. Click through to something that actually shows you something. So this is the site there, it's next to Aqueduct. You can see it's got the A train running right alongside of it. At the bottom of your screen is the Belt Parkway, and the roadway that's just below the site is the North Conduit Service Road, the Belt Parkway Service Road. Kohansi Street is the street that's on the left of the site, right there. And to the left of the site where you see now dirt, that's an older image, there are houses that are built there. And there are houses that are built there under an R3 zoning designation. The site itself was a gas station for very many years, and it's laid languishing for decades. We've asked permission, and are asking you, to rezone that site from an R3X to an R3XC22 overlay. And that R3X with the C22 overlay will allow, if I can just click through to the end, which, there you go, will allow the redevelopment of the site with that gas station. The gas station, although it may seem like an odd request to have a gas station in a residential district, this is at the cusp of the residences, where the residences are, and it's actually very well-supported by the community, because they like the idea of having some activity at the site. To the right of the site, where it goes off the page, where the green is, as I mentioned before, is the elevated A train. That's a subway entrance right there, is a subway stop right there. And a lot of people walk across the site, and I'll come to this microphone, this one's having trouble. A lot of, a lot of people come to the site and use the site to get on and off the train. They walk through the property. It's dark, it's empty at night. People like the idea of lighting up the site, of having an active use there. And also, in talking with the community board, we're going to be allowing people to park on the site to pick up passengers from the train station. It's a very big problem right now in the North, on North Conduit Avenue, it's a very busy roadway, it's the service road, as I mentioned a moment ago. And at 4 o'clock in the afternoon during rush hour, it's bumper-to-bumper backed up. And if you're the unlucky soul that has to pick up a family member or a friend from the train station, if I can continue for one minute?
No, I'm afraid not.
I'll wrap up. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Palatnik.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Tortoglio.
Yes, good morning. I'm just here for, to answer any questions. I'm the engineer of record for the project, so just answer any questions as needed.
Questions from the commission? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And also available to answer questions is Andrew Vilani.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Andrew Valeri from Stonefield Engineering and Design, traffic consultant on the project, I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Ortiz.
Perhaps you're the one to answer this. I'm curious what the signage will look like. I mean, obviously, you want to, oh, maybe that was for someone.
And also available to answer questions is Andrew Vilani.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Valeri from Stonefield Engineering and Design, traffic consultant on the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Ortiz.
Perhaps you're the one to answer this. I'm curious what the signage will look like. Obviously, you want to, oh, maybe that was for someone. That should have been for someone else. Given its location and proximity to major thoroughfare, obviously, people want to know there's a gas station. How do you communicate that?
Thank you. So the slide that's put up there is the predominant signage diagram. What it shows is the freestanding sign, which will be located at the corner. It dictates the brand of gas, the price of gas, which is very important, obviously, the price of fuel. And then the other red-and-white feature that you see is the overhead canopy over the pumps that provide the shielding from weather over the pump islands. And that should still have a very minimal signage indicating, again, the brand of gasoline, which would be Exxon. The C2 zoning district regulations are quite strict with regard to signage, 50 square feet of illuminated per frontage. The signs will, of course, comply in every respect with those requirements.
Will they be visible from the highway?
Yes, so the freestanding sign, oh, from the main line of the highway? Probably not. Maybe going back to the aerial photo might give a little bit of a better indication of proximity.
Quite far, yeah.
Yeah, so it's pretty far away. It's a lot of vegetation in between. And given there's not an off-ramp right there, we're not really trying to capture that traffic.
I mean, I will say, we've been seeing a lot of gasoline stations turn over to residential, and we know that this is needed, whether we like it or not. So every once in a while, I think this is just fine.
Great observation. Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Again, we're a little slow on the uptake here, and this is a question that really should have gone to Mr. Palatnik. And I noticed as he was flipping through his slides, you had an image of a restrictive declaration.
Yes, yes, and I apologize I didn't get to that. I'd be happy to address that.
I think the Community Board and Borough President's recommendations made it quite clear that there is a restrictive declaration that has been prepared, and I would just ask if we could have a copy of it submitted afterwards so that we could look at it.
Certainly, certainly.
And I think the gist of that is to prevent hotel development, which would otherwise be allowed by the overlay that you're asking.
Correct.
Thank you. We'll distribute that to the Commission. Other questions? Okay, and I will ask, as usual, if there's anyone else present here who would want to be heard on the matter? It appears not, and so the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Borough of Staten Island, count on number 29, CD 3, C 190061, PCR. A public hearing in the matter of an application for the site selection and acquisition of property concerning Olmstead Beale House Park.
Our first speaker will be Garrett Berger.
Hello. Happy Halloween. I'm Garrett Berger from NYC Parks. NYC Parks is a co-applicant on this application with the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, and we are proposing to site select and acquire a privately-owned parcel consisting of blocks 5378, lots 80, and 99, also known as 4485 Highland Boulevard, as an addition to Olmstead Beale House Park. As you can see in the map, the proposed addition is outlined in red, and it's about 1.19 acres. And the existing Olmstead Beale House Park is 1.67 acres. Along with the existing park, the proposed addition was also originally part of Frederick Law Olmstead's Staten Island farm. And so Park's proposing to acquire it to preserve this property in addition to the existing park and to protect it from development. We're also proposing to acquire this site because currently the park lacks access and space for programming and parking, and so this proposed addition provides this direct access from Highland Boulevard, as well as space for programming and parking as well. I should also mention that the owners of this property have long been interested in selling to the city for historic preservation and park purposes, and they're here today. And one of the owners is also part of a nascent Friends group that's advocating for funds to rehabilitate Olmstead Beale House. This just shows the surrounding area of the proposed addition and park. As you can see, it's primarily residential. It also includes a small portion of the 110-acre Crescent Beach Park, as well as, of course, the existing Olmstead Beale House Park. However, the larger neighborhood of Eltingville is actually, according to the 2014 Seeker Manual, underserved by open space, which means that there are less than 2.5 acres of open space per 1,000 people. So even though we have these existing parks in direct vicinity of the proposed addition, the larger neighborhood is underserved by open space, so this addition would serve to correct that somewhat. And then my final slide is just, or two slides, is just some photos of the house, the proposed addition. This is not the Olmstead Beale House. This is the house that's on the property proposed to be acquired. As you can see in addition to the house, there's some other improvements, like a disused pool, a gazebo. And then on the next page, this is photos primarily of the vacant lot that's next to it. That's also part of the parcel proposed to be acquired. And in photo six in the background there, you can see this driveway. Currently, that's a shared access easement and the only means of access to the Olmstead Beale House. So as I said before, the proposed addition would help to create new direct access from Highland Boulevard. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions from the Commission.
Commissioner Afon.
Yes, thank you for sharing it and for sharing the photos. Are there funds available to do even basic improvements for safety, or the additional lots, such as an empty swimming pool?
Okay, we are pursuing funds for the entire property. We have some capability internally to make sure that the site is safe and secure. We haven't discussed exactly what's to be done with the pool.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
One of my favorite questions today is, so how long has it taken to get to this point? I would imagine quite a while. It's a pretty, I mean, it's great to see, but it seems pretty ambitious, too.
So we acquired the original park in 2006, and we've made some emergency repairs to the park. And in addition to the addition, there are a lot of other things in the works. When coordination with the Landmarks Conservancy, a conditions assessment report was done of the existing house, and we're also pursuing funds for the stabilization of the Olmstead Beale House as well.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Berger.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christine Casman Dunn.
Good morning. My name is Christine Casman Dunn, and, thank you. This wonderful property has been in my family for almost 70 years. Growing up here, we were well aware of the history of the ancient house next door, and we knew our land was once part of Olmstead's 115 acres. We knew we were privileged to live in such a beautiful setting, but we also knew that we could never let builders destroy it all. And believe me, they want to. Builders are always pulling up the driveway, asking us if we want to sell. And my mother would say, "Get off my land." I love this place so very much. And it's a bittersweet decision to leave it, but it's the only way that we can preserve it, and it was once part of Olmstead's land. I brought a little show and tell. Well, you see this, Garrett. I wonder if any of you know what these are. These are Osage oranges. This is the fruit of the Osage orange tree. On our property, in fact, that top-left picture behind the Forsythia, those trees, are these trees, Osage oranges. This is the fruit that falls from them. They're really not good for anything much. They smell good. Martha Stewart puts them in a bowl and makes the cover of her magazine. Squirrels eat them. We used to roll them out onto the boulevard, watch them get squashed. We'd throw them at our enemies. We have 28 of these trees on our property. These trees were planted by Olmstead 168 years ago, and they're still producing fruit. And there are many other trees. And these trees are on our property, and there are other trees that Olmstead planted that are on the property that Park's department owns right now, and also all 168 years and still going strong. So we feel it's time to give them back to Olmstead to preserve them. And if anybody would like to take any of these home, you're welcome. They are supposedly good for repelling cockroaches. Not that I'm saying you have to. Thank you.
Can I throw them at my enemies?
Throw at your enemies. You can roll them out on the street.
Well, Ms. Casman Dunn, I can't thank you enough for bringing such a personal perspective to this. I could listen to you talk about the land all day.
And I could talk about it all day.
Are there questions from the Commission? Yes, Commissioner Cirillo.
Again, more of a comment than a question, and I just want to acknowledge your family's commitment and dedication to the island, but particularly to this important landmark property, and what it means to the community to have this preserved, and as difficult as it is, in a sense, to let go. You're really helping to build and to hold on to it on behalf of so many people who will continue to enjoy this. So I just want to say thank you, and as someone who had the privilege of representing this area for years and years ago, I'm glad you finally found a team of elected officials who could make this happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Edie.
And I, too, just wanted to say thank you for preserving this wonderful landmark, and also not just on behalf of the community, but on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Levin.
And thank you for taking the time to come and tell us about it so effectively. It makes a big difference for our somewhat dry public review process to have the heart put back in these stories. And not obvious that you would show up. Sometimes people in your situation don't show up, but it makes an enormous impression, so thanks for coming.
It's very important to our whole family.
Commissioner Afon.
I'm just going to pile on here. I hope that you will record your memories of this so that others who visit the property, as it becomes a flourishing place, will be able to share your history.
Very good. Great, thank you, Ms. Casman Dunn. And those are the only folks who have signed up, if anyone else is moved by Ms. Casman Dunn's testimony and wants to share memories. Okay, the public hearing on this item is closed. And Madam Secretary, anything else on the agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I'll close the meeting by saying I hope that for all of us, the day is full of treats, not tricks.